Okay, I have seven o'clock so that we can get you home to watch the football game. I'm gonna start right on time and I'm gonna call the meeting to order. But our first order of business is to please join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. And just a reminder, if you haven't already done so, please turn off all of your electronic devices or put them on silent or airplane mode. And with that, I'll start with some introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor. And to my right, our city administrator, Mike Barone, finance director, Brian Grimm, community development director, David Abel, our city attorney, Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven, and getting back to a seat is our chief of police, Paul Falls. And to my left, our council members, Patricia Thol, Mark Vanderlinde, Pam Mortenson, Bob Christians, and on the end, we have our city engineer, Paul Hornby. And also with us this evening, taking our minutes, is Chris Lindquist, our city clerk. And so again, welcome, everybody. Our first order will be to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Vanderlinde and seconded by Ms. Thol to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. This evening, we don't have any special presentations. And now yours, you signed in, but I'm assuming it's for your, yes, so you don't need to speak then, okay, alright, alright. So we'll move on to consent agenda items. We have A through I, we have approve our work session meeting minutes from September 19th, 2016. B is approve our closed work session meeting minutes from September 19. And C is approve our regular meeting minutes from September 19, 2016. And then there's a resolution to approve our claims. E is a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with Local 49 Public Works to add a water treatment plant position. And F is a resolution to certify delinquent utilities for 2017 taxes. And G is a resolution to certify delinquent land use and special fees to 2017 taxes. And next, we have two variance approvals, and that's H, approve variance for Bruce and Ann Allen at 5325 Edsel Road. And I is approve a resolution approving a variance for Randy and Lori Stoffaran at 5820 Loring Drive. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through I?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I was seconding it.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Thol and seconded by Mr. Christians to approve consent agenda items A through I as read. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Next, we, public hearings, we have none this evening, so we'll move on to our business items. Our first is approve a revised proposal for Enchanted Lane Tuxedo Road project, and that is Mr. Hornby.
Yes, good evening, mayor, members of the council. We did have some discussion with the council regarding adding Tuxedo Road and Tuxedo Boulevard in with the Enchanted Lane feasibility report and perimeter design project. We did revise our, this staff had WSB revise our proposal for the addition of Tuxedo Road. We also did add in some geotechnical work rather than doing soil borings to try to cut costs back. This would cut costs down to about a third of the soil boring, but to take some cores of the roadway, so we go through the pavement and I'll go through the class five. And that would be to make sure we have enough class five to reclaim the roadway. And also that we have enough pavement to do the reclamation. And we don't have, you know, situation, we have two inches of aggregate base below and 12 inches of pavement, because that causes problems for reclamation, too. So we just wanna make sure that we at least check, do enough cores of the geotechnical work, so that's well worth that. And then, there's quite a bit of wetland that borders both Enchanted Lane and Tuxedo Road. There's about 3,000 feet of it. So we want to know where that line is, because in some of those locations, we need to raise Enchanted Lane, I don't think we need to along Tuxedo. But there are some culverts that need to be replaced on Tuxedo, and also some shoreline restoration needs to occur. So I think it's best to do those delineations now, so we know where that line is. That also includes going through the Watershed District, they have that delineation approved, and that includes a report. The revised proposal for the feasibility report is a fee of $28,500, keeping in mind that just under $15,000 of that was Enchanted Lane, including some survey for some floodplain limits on that as well. Staff does recommend adopting the resolution 168-16, authorizing incorporation of feasibility report, perimeter design, wetland and floodplain impact assessments, as authorized for Enchanted Lane and Tuxedo Road and scope of services as amended.
Okay, any questions? Sounds pretty straightforward. So do I have a motion to approve the revised proposal for Enchanted Lane Tuxedo Road project? Resolution number 168-16?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Mr. Vanderlinde. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And next, we have authorized plans and specifications for Grandview Avenue Improvement Project.
Mayor, members of the council, Grandview Avenue was initially identified for a mill and overlay with the Red Oak Development. As we were reviewing Grandview over the past year, we identified that the pavement has deteriorated quite a bit since the plat approval and development agreement. And recommended reclamation of that existing pavement. And it also would include widening of the road by about two feet.
I think that was always in the original plan, so...
And that was in the original agreement. There is some cost participation, as you are aware, from the developer, an amount of $35,000. The project cost is estimated in the CIP as $145,000 or for the, what we had estimated for bonding. And WSB has prepared a professional services proposal in the amount of $19,500 to prepare plans and specs. I should note that in the recommendation, the staff does recommend approval of resolution 169-16, approving the professional services proposal for the preparation of bidding documents, the bidding phase, but it says in the recommendation, construction, and construction is not identified at this point.
Okay, so that would be additional?
Yes.
Okay, and then, okay, also on this one, what about soil borings? Because, again, if it's a reclamation project, do we need to find out?
We are also proposing the core of this one as well.
Okay, and is that included in the 19-5?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll do core borings and then also plans and specifications based on the core boring, borings?
Correct, and we're also doing a topographic survey there, too.
Okay.
Since we are limited on right-of-way going through there?
Right.
We wanna make sure we have two feet, where we need to have two feet.
And the two, the two feet will then give it a total of 18 feet, or how much?
Yeah, it's about 18 to 20 feet.
Okay, so you want it more uniform? I mean, so you want it like 20 feet is what you're trying to achieve?
Correct.
Okay.
And that comes through the fire code for fire access, so...
Okay, and then, somebody had asked me, I think one of our planning commissioners, why aren't we, or are we planning on doing curb and gutter in that section? I said, "I didn't think so, I thought it would be more of a rural design standard."
Correct, it's, if we do add some curb, it would be just from a, to try to control drainage a little bit better.
Right.
We're not planning, we're just planning to rehabilitate the pavement.
Okay, and that's what I kinda thought, yep.
Yeah, I just have one question. $35,000, you said, is being contributed by the developer?
Correct.
Okay, and then the total project is 145 plus WSB's fee of 19-5, so the total is 164?
No, the 145 includes all those costs.
That includes...
The 145 is a project cost.
Total.
For capital, for capital improvement planning.
Okay, so I lost track, but what was the 19-5?
Yes.
For design and specs and boring?
So the total project would be 164 or 5?
No.
No.
Construction's estimated probably to be at 125.
Okay, I got you, okay, thank you, thank you, okay, got you.
Correct. When we, when we do, when we prepare costs for capital improvement planning, we look at project costs.
Okay.
All the soft costs as well.
So if I say 145,000, that, the project cost, that includes indirect, includes the construction.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Okay, alright, any other? And then, this would happen next year, along with some of the other roads that we were, we've been talking about, so it would all be tied together as we were talking about before to get a better cost, too, on potential.
Correct, and what we'd like to do is, especially if this falls in line timing-wise, is bid all these actually in one package.
Yes.
But as is presented here, it's presented like a, so it's own plan set, so costs jump, are likely to be lower than this.
Okay, and that we like to see that, so, alright, any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 169-16, and this is to authorize plans and specifications for Grandview Avenue Improvement Project with WSB in the amount of $19,500?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Thol and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next, we have a purchase of our Outlet D in Hunter's Crest 6th Edition for a future water tower and water treatment plant.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, pleased to provide this agenda item update. As you know, the city council has been negotiating a purchase agreement with Commerce Bank for an outlot, they own Outlet D in Hunter's Crest 6th Edition. Both parties have come to terms of the agreement, and what we're looking for from council tonight is for you to approve the attached agreement with the terms as written. A little bit of background, the city completed a comprehensive water system plan update back originally in 2006. It helped the city look at long and short-term water needs for the city and its infrastructure. It was later updated in 2008 when we went through a comprehensive plan update. When we updated our plan, we looked at where the city was gonna grow, and that's when we also updated our water system plan. And what was determined was the need for water storage down in our southwestern portion of our city. And now, with us moving forward with our water infrastructure, our water treatment plants, it's also identified the need for, at some point, a future water treatment plant in the southwestern portion of our city. As the council knows, over the past probably two years, if not more, we have been actively looking for a site to accommodate such facilities. And we've focused on many different properties in that area, and a lot of them have failed for a number of reasons. Some being unwilling landowners, not willing to sell. We've ran into agricultural preserve problems, there's been land that's been enrolled in that, we've come to the conclusion we can't get it out of, out of that program. Topography's been an issue. There's been a wide range of issues, sale price has been an issue, some, some people just want a lot of money for their property. And finally, what we ended up doing was coming to terms on this purchase agreement with Commerce Bank with the outlot that currently is sitting vacant. It's about 7.4 acres, about 1 to 2 acres we approximate is actual wetland. We're looking at a purchase price, as agreed in our previous closed session meetings, at $220,000. This land acquisition cost was budgeted as part of our CIP, our water improvements and land purchase price. We do have some due diligence to do, which is another agenda item that we'll need to talk about here, but if, if all of our due diligence pans out, we would be looking to close, as you'll see in the purchase agreement by December 15th. So we do have some things we need to get moving on, which, as I said, is another item for discussion. But what we're recommending is that the council approve the purchase agreement with Commerce Bank for Outlet D, Hunter's Crest 6th Edition for a future water tower and water treatment plant, as attached in your packet.
Okay, any questions? Otherwise, I'll just make a couple comments. This is, this is not part of the current, if you will, Hunter's Crest. It's, it was kind of ghost-platted, if you will. It's, it's not like a few lots that are inside the development, it's on the fringes outside. And our plan is, if we do purchase this eventually, that the remaining acres that we're not gonna use for the water tower and future, maybe 15, 20 years from now, water plant, then those would be sold off when that other area is developed. And then we could recoup some of our costs as well. So that might, that's kind of the thought process here for this. With that, any other questions?
David, are there, you know, you've got also the soil testing and things like that, so I'm assuming the purchase agreement has those contingencies?
Absolutely, yes. If we don't find from an engineering or a site standpoint that it can't accommodate what we need, we need to do, that is written as a term of the purchase agreement, we're getting back out of the situation.
And Ron, you agree, you've put your sign of blessing or approval on this agreement.
I drafted it. So it's, it's a great agreement.
I kinda thought you'd say that.
Is there an estimated cost for the testing, just out of curiosity?
Well, you're jumping ahead.
Yeah, there will be, yes. So are we in favor of executing this purchase agreement with the contingencies that are listed in the agreement?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made, seconded, to approve the purchase agreement with Commerce Bank for the purchase of the land, that would be Outlet D, Hunter's Crest 6th Edition. Any further comments? Do I need to list, for 220,000? Alright, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Now, we'll get to council members, council member Mortenson's question?
Madam Mayor, first of all, I think the next agenda item is approve compliance with our plan.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Is that correct, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes.
So this, this, too, is just another due diligence item we're taking care of now, even though we're not actually closing, we're just taking care of this item ahead of time. Minnesota statute 462-356 states that when any agency is buying, any agencies is buying publicly-owned interest real property within a city, that we need to review that with our comprehensive plan and our local planning agency. And, and come up with, in writing, findings to state that is, it is not in conflict with our comprehensive plan. So it's, it seems a little redundant that we need to do this ourselves. Typically, we're, we're looking at other agencies like Three Rivers Park District or the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. When they're looking to buy land, they'll come to us, and we need to go through this process. But it does, it does apply to us as well. If we're gonna go buy some land and turn it into public, we need to review that with our comp plan. We do allow for public infrastructure in all of our zoning districts in Minutrista. So therefore, as you can see in the attached resolution, there is no conflict with us buying this piece of property, public infrastructure is allowed within this, this zoning classification. So what we're looking for you from council, from, again, from a due diligence standpoint, if we were to close, we have this resolution to show, we did review it in compliance with our comprehensive plan and found that there is not a conflict with us going ahead to move forward with that purchase. So we're looking for a motion to adopt resolution 176-16 regarding acquisition of property for a city water tower in Minutrista.
Have we done this before, David?
We have.
In the case of the Gillespie property, that was different because it was donated?
It was donated to us, but we, we've done it before, absolutely. We did it when, the last piece would have been the school property for our water treatment site.
Can I make the motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Mr. Christians. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So now, we'll discuss the conditions to closing, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. So as, as mentioned, we do have some terms and conditions and due diligence we most certainly wanna do to ensure that we can do what we wanna do with the site. And given where we're at this time of year, time is of the essence on a couple of these things. The most important would be the, the wetland delineation, because we're running out of the growing season time for them to actually get out and do the fieldwork and mark where they think the boundary is. So that's, that's one item. The second item that's very important would be the geotechnical soil boring testing that needs to occur. They'll actually do two different test sites, two drilling sites where we think a tower could work, topographically-wise on the site, and they're gonna drill down 100 feet to ensure that there's adequate base to put a tower there, or determine how much work we'll have to do and how much it's gonna cost to put a tower there. So what we're asking from, from council this evening, given our tight deadline, given the potential closing of December 15th, we're asking for council to go ahead and authorize staff to work with both WSB and SEH. SEH mainly being the kind, the engineering firm that's been hired to do the water tower in, in hiring geotechnical, getting soil, soil borings done with a cost not to exceed $8,000. We've got some conservative estimates from SEH on what that worked with cost, they feel it should not exceed $8,000. And then with the, just the first task of getting a wetland delineation started, we're looking at roughly $2,400 cost not to exceed to get that work started. And this is enough information for us to decide whether or not we're actually gonna follow through on, on closing of the property or not, to, to determine that if it's suitable for what, what our needs are. And again, given, given the timing, that's why we're, we're handling this a little bit different than just bringing quotes like we normally would, just so that we don't have to wait another meeting and we can bring these, get these items moving forward to decide if we can close on the property or not.
And then, if for some reason or other, there's, let's say, some issues with the soil, and we have to do some soil corrections, can that then, can we then renegotiate the cost of the land?
Well, Madam Mayor, council, there's no provision in the agreement to that effect. I suppose we could try that, but really, the idea is, we've settled on a price, and then what we're trying to figure out is, as David said earlier, does it suit our needs? And, and if it does, then I think we've established a price. If it doesn't, if we can't support the improvements that we want, we would simply pass on the property.
So that's a contingency clause that we can walk if...
Absolutely.
Right, I mean, if we have to, one of the, that's why they're going down 100 feet, if they have to do pilings or something where it's gonna be an exorbitant amount of money to do it, I mean, we'd walk away, we'd continue to look.
Okay.
I think I know the answer to this, but in some real estate transactions, there are some shared costs. Is this something that the bank ever, or anybody would share cost in the testing of
Those weren't terms of the purchase agreement, we did not, I mean, you're, in essence, you're just raising the purchase price if you're gonna get into things like that. This is a little different than building a house. I mean, we're, we're building a, a city water tower and public water treatment building, so we, we certainly wanna be in the driver's seat to make sure that we're, the adequate work is getting done, and the people that we wanna hire are doing what needs to be done. Generally, if you're gonna share in, in those things, it just opens it up for, for more debate, but no, that those aren't terms of the purchase agreement.
Good question.
And then, the costs here, these estimated costs, are these not to exceed, or do you feel that they're maybe a little high, or...
They're, they're conservative.
Yeah, so...
Not to exceed.
So hopefully, we'll come in less than that. So that would be a total of $10,400?
Correct.
For all those, for the total services? Soil testing and surveying and wetland delineation? Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, then a motion to approve a total of, not to exceed $10,400 to do the, to move forward with the inspection, surveying, and soil testing of Outlet D?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion has been made by Ms. Thol and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So maybe what you could do, somebody's staff, when we have these total costs, I know they'll come to us in form of claims, but just kind of point it out to us, so that, yep. Next, we have approve a change order for the mill and overlay project for Crest Ridge, I believe Crest Ridge?
Crest Ridge, yes.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, we did start working on our mill and overlay project. The contractor did go through and mill the initial surface on both the Fairway, Fairway Drive and Fairway Court. And Crest Ridge, when they did the milling there, we found that there were problems in some areas of the wear course spalling off, the wear course that was left, was spalling off in some locations. And in other places, you could, you know, it adhered to the base course just fine, so it was kinda spotty. And in some areas, the pavement was thin, so the mill machine exposed gravel. The other thing we found is the base course that was exposed was shot, it's alligator marked, much like we showed when we showed Farm Hill, Circle and Farm Hill Drive. So we're recommending that all that pavement be removed and new pavement be put in. If we overlaid that as a mill and overlay, the failed areas of that base course would show right back through the wear course within a couple of years. So we asked the contractor to put together a change order, or give us pricing for a change order that would include mobilization of equipment, sign bituminous pavement, subgrade preparation, so a subgrade preparation is scarifying the remaining aggregate base and recompacting it, and then adding an item to remove the bituminous pavement, the remaining bituminous pavement, and then adding a bituminous base to the project in the contract. We already have wear in there, so we're just gonna add base. The, I should, I should make a correction in our memo under the fiscal impact, the change order amount is $36,687.50. That is a unit price change order, so they're only paid for the amount that's actually installed. That would increase the contract price from $167,824 to $204,511.50. We did go for...
Paul, I'm sorry, Ms. Torber, can you give me those numbers again? The change order amount is $36,600?
687.
687.
Point 50. And then the contract would increase to $204,511.50. There was an error in the initial amount the contractor quoted us, so it was actually less than he quoted.
Okay. And where do the funds come from?
The funds come from the roadway fund and then adjustments to the, to the 2017 budget.
Yeah, we might just have to potentially do a little less in 2017. I mean, from talking with Mr. Hornby and Mr. Peters, it sounds like, you know, they strongly recommend that this needs to be done. I think they looked at some different options that were all the way up to, you know, $60,000, but I think they tried to work with the contractor to get it down to this $36,000 amount to make the, I guess, product, or in this case, the, you know, the pavement be what it needs to be, and, but try to be cognizant of, obviously, it's a, it's a decent-sized change order based on what was found once they got out there and were doing the job, so...
So what you're talking about is, basically, the next year may be having to eliminate one mill and overlay project, is that correct?
Or making some adjustments in the streets that are being done.
Okay.
Or do a little less seal coating, or...
Do a little less, right, do a little less something in the maintenance program.
What has been done at this point?
All the streets have been milled.
At this point?
Yes, we haven't, we haven't ordered any of this work, contractors...
We can't leave the road like this.
No, we cannot leave it like this, but from an engineering standpoint, we can't pave Crest Ridge Court with that base in that condition.
How long would this take to finish it?
I would say the contractor would be in and out of there in two weeks.
Two weeks.
They do have a little bit of work to do with curb and gutter and so forth, but they'll be done by the end of, by the end of October. There's also, the change order that's in your packet also extends the completion date to October 30th.
And I assume we'll communicate that with the residents, I know a number of those residents that live on that street and work there.
Just so you know, I've already sent out a notification, and it's also on the city's website, that I let's people know what is going on, and when this is approved, we'll issue another one.
And so they'll know that?
Yes, so they'll know what's going on, we'll get a schedule from the contractor. I'm assuming that they're gonna try to move in sometime this week. Um, I'm assuming that they're going to try to move in sometime this week and start, start this work.
Okay.
When we did get the estimated cost for project, um, isn't like the whole road looked at, at that time, so that, you know, now we're finding out that spots were different than what the cost indicated? How, how was, how did that happen?
This is what you would find in construction as an unforeseen condition of the pavement. We don't have any records of how that was put together. Um, trying to think what year this was put together, this roadway came in, I would say it was in the nineteen eighties. It's clear that when that road was constructed, they didn't put what they call a tack coat between the layers of bituminous, which means the upper course of the pavement's been floating on the lower course, it comes loose, so what ends up happening is that pavement was set up for failure right away when it was built. So now, we're dealing with that afterwards.
And you wouldn't know that until this point in a project?
Correct.
Till you start tearing it apart, I mean?
Yeah, once you, once, once they started milling it, um, it just started coming apart. And it's unfortunate, and it was, it is spotty, if you go out there and look, there are portions of the wear course that's still stuck to the base course, like there was a tack coat. But it's obvious that, I think, the majority of it, there isn't. I, when I met my, uh, staff out there to take a look at it, I think I walked the first half of it and turned around and went back to my car, because it, the whole thing is, is, is the same way, it's just that they can't, you couldn't put a wear course on top of that, no way.
And this is too small to reclaim? Too small, broadened?
We did talk about that, and the thought was that bringing the reclaim machine in, reclaim it, uh, was going to start to be too cost, more costly than this budget, it's just not big enough, correct?
And how long of a lifespan will we have with this road once it's done in this manner?
Well, I'd say once you, with recompacting the aggregate base and putting a new mat on, this is another twenty-year roadway.
So similar to a, a, um, yeah, reclamation project?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't have a sand section underneath it, but there's plenty of aggregate base in it. Um, we did go do digs and test holes and-
Okay.
And they're not figuring, planning on putting any type of geofabric under this?
Not on, not between the pavement and the aggregate, no.
Well, but, but they're, they're going to bring in more aggregate, right?
Just to, um, supplement the, but we, we, if we have to build up the crown in a few areas, it's very little aggregate we have here, but if we have to build up the aggregate, the crown a little bit, that's what the, we're going to supplement the aggregate for reshaping.
So they're not going to cover the whole thing with aggregate?
No.
Okay.
And there's still some curb that has to come out of here and some drain tile that has to be put on this particular roadway.
And that's all included in that total price, okay?
Yep.
Okay.
And there is no assessment to the properties?
Correct, yeah, we haven't, uh-
Yes, this is not assessed.
Been doing, yeah, assessing some mill and overlay projects.
Mill and overlay projects, we haven't been assessing, and maybe we have to start looking, it's hard to do some and not assess, and then at some point in time in the middle, start assessing, that kind of is a-
It's tough.
Not, not real fair either, so.
That's the question.
Yeah, 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 all right. Um, with that, council, what is your pleasure? Where the, uh, staff is recommending to approve change order number one for the two thousand sixteen mill and overlay project, um, and it's Resolution number one seventy-seven dash one six.
So moved.
Okay, motions made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Vanderlin, you made the motion, and Mr. Christian seconded. Further discussion and questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five oh. All right, thank you very much, um, one of those things that you-
Unforeseen.
Unforeseen, kind of like remodeling. All right, um, administrative items, staff reports, city administrator?
Uh, yes, mayor and council, I just have one announcement to share with you. Um, we, as you know, we have an election this year, and I believe for the, uh, second election year cycle in a row, we're going to have a candidate forum sponsored by the Legal Women Voters. Uh, this is the Legal Women Voters out of the Wayzata Clement area that serves Minutrista, that, uh, candidate forum will be on Thursday of this week, October sixth, starting at seven o'clock PM right here in our city council chambers, and, uh, public is invited, so, um, and you are as well, so, um, please note that on the calendar.
Okay, anybody else? Any other staff reports? Okay, then I'll just quickly, um, I did go to the, uh, city, uh, to the city, to the school, um, during their mock crash, um, event, and watched that, and it was very interesting, very informative, and, uh, certainly, I think, the adults that were there learned as much as the kids that were there, and hopefully, adults as well as kids won't be texting while they're driving. That was the, the, uh, theme this year, last year it was drunk driving, this year it was texting while driving. It was a, a wonderful, wonderful event, a joint venture between the Minutrista Police Department, the Mount Fire Department, Hennepin County Coroner's Office, um, let's see, North Memorial, um, Helicopter, uh, the, uh, Bridgeview, um, Ambulance Service, uh, State Farm Insurance, Williams Towing, and the freshwater, um, not the freshwater, River Valley Church also helped out with some of the, um, sound, uh, systems, and of course, the school and many of, of the children, too, so it was a really, really, I hope I didn't forget anybody, it was a really good event and very informative and very, um, eye-opening, too. Um, and again, kudos to our police department for doing that wonderful event. Um, I also attended the planning commission meeting in, on Monday, uh, previous Monday, and I also attended a Woodland Cove gathering, uh, that was, um, put together by Madam E. Holmes, and not a lot of people turned out, but nonetheless, it was nice to talk with the, the few that came, and, um, it's also to see their wonderful and lovely, uh, clubhouse that's out there, and, um, yeah, I was just going to mention, too, the League of Minnesota Voters, and there's three candidates for the two open council positions, and, and myself, and so, um, the sole candidate, of course, for, for the mayor position, and, um, we will be here to answer questions, please come and bring your questions.